Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for September the 28th, 2016. As is our usual practice, we will begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is in memory of first Shirley Kane, who is the mother of Ray Kane, one of our firefighters, as well as Joanne Colly, who is the mother of one of our police officers, Brent Colly. So in their memory, we offer a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion for consideration, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-163, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting held on September 14th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-163 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-164, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-164 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-165, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending September 13th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-165 to approve the payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-166, accept the retirement resignation of Timothy E. Yule, part-time firefighter, EMT, FAO, in the Fire Department effective October 28th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-166 to accept the retirement resignation of Timothy E. Yule.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-167, approve Nicholas Overmeyer as student intern unpaid in the Community Development Department, reporting to Greg DeLong as part of the Mount St. Joseph University Service Learning Program for the period of October 2016 through December 2016, working on various projects including but not limited to marketing and zoning grant research.
I move motion 2016-167 to approve Nicholas Overmeyer as a student intern in the Community Development Department.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-168, approve the Fire Department promotion of Walter J. Russell from part-time firefighter paramedic to career firefighter EMT effective October 14th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-168 to approve the Fire Department promotion of Walter J. Russell.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, there are no presentations scheduled for this evening, so we'll move to trustees' correspondence. Trustee Oswald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Sturts.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Well, then, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we'd like to extend our congratulations to Wally Russell on his promotion from firefighter EMT, from part-time to full-time firefighter and EMT. So congratulations, Wally Russell, as well as congratulations and best wishes to Tim Yule on his retirement as he finishes 20 years with the Delhi Township Fire Department. So, congratulations, Tim Yule. Report from the fiscal officer.
No report tonight.
All right. No public hearings, reports from departments. We will have a report from Josh Torbeck, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, trustees. About a year ago, we received a donation from the Delhi Civic Association of about $12,000 to be used towards playground equipment. Over the course of the year, we've been applying for grants, looking for certain things we can do, and we unfortunately didn't get the grant that we were going for, but we were willing to come to a discount with one of the vendors that he's willing to come up with. So I'm, I came up with a project to expand our playground as far as removing the swings and putting a playground in specifically for two- to five-year-olds and moving the swings to a different location. So you can see the pricing up there for this proposal. It's about $35,000 project if you take off the $12,000 donation and the, and close to $9,000 discount. We're looking at a cost of the township of $14,517. To reduce that, we could install it ourselves. That would give us a little bit more cost savings. I recommend going with the vendor, but we could do it ourselves. If we did not want to go that route, if the township did not want to put any money towards it, we could also go towards a more freestanding element such as a climbing boulder or seesaw. That's something that could fit right in what we currently have in between the swings and the playground. That would cost, we would spend every single dollar, so that'd be $12,000, but there'd be no cost to township. Or we can always hold on to the money, apply for more grants during the fall and the winter, and see if we can come up with some, some sort of matching funds as far as grants in the spring. But that discount from the vendor will probably not be there if we don't go with that through the fall. If we wait till spring, that discount will probably be gone. So those are the three options I, that I'm giving, presenting to you, but I, my recommendation would be the first one. I think that's, as far as getting the most bang for your buck, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Josh, on number one.
Yes.
Bad time of year to be putting in a $14,000 expenditure because we're at the end of the budget, and I'd rather see us appropriate accordingly into the budget for 2017. In addition to that, I just, the third option to wait for matching funds, I think sounds very attractive because I think there are other grants out there that we could get. All this being said, I want to make sure that the Delhi Civic Association is in agreement and will allow us to wait due to the timing and the, you know, quite honestly, I mean, a TIF expenditure right now, after we just purchased all the radios, be pretty tight. That's just my thought. Trustee Oswald.
No, that was my question, is where do you propose the $14,000 come from? TIFs? Okay. And this is why we're asking for a park levy too?
Yeah.
So my thought would be, make, reach out to the Civic Association, find out their thoughts. It's my understanding from talking to trustee Sturts, they're not looking into a climbing wall or rock. So if we can get something better that would suit their needs for tots and get a grant, then I'd prefer to wait and then build it into the budget next year.
Trustee Sturts.
Yeah, I totally agree. Totally against a climbing wall or a rock because their intent was to address something for the tots. And, you know, with all the budget things, I totally agree with waiting for the grants and hopefully the vendor may give some discount, maybe not that much, but they can't plan on this winter anyway, but.
Well, we'll certainly look at grants, and there's plenty out there, so we can, we can continue that process. Not a problem.
Josh, I think the individuals that you're working with, with the Delhi Civic Association are, you know, well-informed.
Yep.
One of them being former trustee Duber, on how we budget, and he will know that we will reserve that donation until we can come up to a conclusion that matches their wish to get a tot lot. Okay?
Certainly.
All right. Thanks, Josh.
And then I just want to take a second and give thanks out to John Backshider. I don't know if you've been through the park lately, but I'm sure you've seen some of the flower boxes out. He also made us these nice chairs, but he's also donated items throughout the, the years. A lot of the woodworking you see has actually been donated by John Backshider. So I just wanted to give a second to actually thank him in public and give him some recognition.
Absolutely.
So, does great work, we appreciate everything he does, and it's, it's really been a beautiful addition to the parks.
Have we sent a letter to him, acknowledged her?
I, so what we'd like to do is, we have a volunteer lunch, I'd like to invite him to it, where we'll, we'll give him a letter and, and kind of give him, you know, some praise in front of some other volunteers as well, so.
That would be great.
We'd like to do something that, that'll, not just to him, but in front of some other people as well.
Right. Well, let us know what we can do from here.
Yep.
But thank you, Mr. John Backshider, because they certainly are very attractive in the park. Great-looking. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
All right, then. Reading of the resolutions. I go back to Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-208, resolution approving purchase order obligations. On behalf of the Township, by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-209, resolution budgeting anticipated revenues, amending appropriations for expenses, authorizing transfers from one appropriation item to another, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Administrator Landrum.
Yes, we have several items tonight. Most of them are all related to the health insurance, self-insurance new fund that has been created and in which the board will be acting on the contracts tonight. The first is health insurance, is, is the revenue amendment. So we have two revenue sources, both in the new Fund 20, which is the self-insurance fund. $42,999.15 is the employer share.
Employee.
Employee share. And the employer share is $228,305.26. So that's the revenue side. The expense side, we have a general fund, other insurance, part of the, two of the negotiations of the contracts have language of indemnification in it. We are, it is not funds that we plan on spending, it is a placeholder, so to speak. We are budgeting $75,000 by the end of the year, it should be $75,000 still there. In 17's budget, when we do 17, self-insurance budget in 17, we plan, we plan to budget this in the self-insurance fund, okay? But right now, with today just doing the transfers of the charges and everything, we don't have that surplus built up yet in the fund since it's only going to be for three months of this year. So the place card holder to make sure that we meet our obligations for that of $75,000 is in the general fund under other insurance. The rest of the, of the other two line items is administrative costs and fees of $78,998.40. That is like the admin fees. And the claims is $192,306.1. Of course, that's fully appropriating every, every dime of revenue we collected, every dime of expense, so they, they equal. Of course, we hope to have claim dollars left. And the last is just a transfer of, from telephone administration into building repairs of $3,000. This is to fix the evaporator coil and repairs to the AC unit in the server room and the administration building.
Mr. Landrum, we have resolutions following this?
Yes.
So there are resolutions in support, in support of these transfers?
Correct.
Okay.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-210, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Administrator Landrum.
These numbers are just our levy dollar amounts that are projected to be received. It's an annual process where we have to accept them.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-211, resolution authorizing the fire chief to execute an agreement with the Delhi Historical Fire Museum Society to host an event at the Neat Road Fire Station, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Administrator Landrum.
Just a simple agreement, the guys are using the historical society, but they'll need a little extra room in the training room, so it's just an agreement for, for that use.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-212, resolution authorizing improvements by, and accepting donation from the Delhi Township Veterans Association for wall number seven to be installed at the Township's Veterans Memorial, imposing conditions, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I believe right now I'd like to call Jeff Loeffler. He is the secretary, I believe, that's your title, correct? Of the Delhi Township Veterans Association.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we've already contacted Shop Monument. We're getting the one granite, it's going to be black, just matching the rest of the other six walls. It's going to be for $10,500. We've contacted Jeffrey Allen, they've given us a quote of $3,000, so that's $13,500. That does not include the names yet to be put on the wall. We have no idea how many we'll get next year. This year we had 62 names. So we get whatever, it's going to be $30 a piece. They usually give us a little bit of a discount when we have the names put on at the manufacturer. The granite wall, as far as the other ones, came from Africa, so that's why we had to do this early. So they have to ship this granite in from Africa, so, all that's been taken care of. It's going to give us another 424 names. It's been six years since we needed a wall, and every time we said, wow, we won't have to do this again, we probably won't even be here to do it, and here we are doing it again. This is the last wall, as you can see up there, this is the last wall that will fit up there, so hopefully this is going to last for a while. And we'll leave it to other boards to figure out where they want to put wall eight, so. Any questions you have, or?
No questions specifically. I mean, this is, this is to match the rest of the plaza.
It's going to be an exact duplicate, and God we trust, in gold letters. It is going to have number seven on it, but it's six, seven feet high, eight inches thick, five feet wide. And we did set up a GoFundMe account, we, and so if anybody is interested in donating, because this is, we do all this by donation, or you can send your check to the Delhi Veterans Association. We have a website, so if anybody needs to find the address, we have it up there, so. And the GoFundMe account as well.
All right. Trustee Oswald, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Trustee Sturts?
No.
Well, Jeff, thank you, and thank you to Delhi Veterans for all that you do for Delhi in memory of these veterans. I see Commander Osterfeld sitting back there, so.
Don's the one with the idea for the monument, so.
We'll look forward to, again, the presentation on November.
November 6th at 1:00 PM is when we dedicate the.
This year's names.
62 names, so we're getting the ceremonies all in place. And there's going to be a new directory, we have that in there, so when people come up, they can find their, the names, just will be placed up there. I'm also kind of like looking for future projects on maybe a kiosk up there, so people can just, hopefully, when the prices keep coming down, that instead of having a directory that every year we have to, that's like two, $250, $300 every year just for that, maybe a kiosk to where we can just change how digitally the names and keep it up there. Not only that, but also have the killed in action, have the biographies in there. We already do, but I, but maybe have it digitally, and maybe we can put more things into that, so it'll be kind of interesting.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-213, resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to execute a license agreement with the county engineer for the installation and maintenance of Go Vibrant signs on existing signposts at various locations throughout the township, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Josh Torbeck, Director of Parks.
Thank you, trustees. This is just an agreement to allow us to put the Go Vibrant signs in the county right away. Once we get approval from Duke to actually put them on some of their utility pools, we'll be ready to get them up.
Sounds good.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-214, resolution entering into a consulting agreement and business associate agreement with Cheryl D. Morgan and Associates, Inc., DBA Cheryl Morgan, in connection with the provision of group insurance benefits to eligible employees and officers, including benefits provided through an individual self-insurance program, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and deliver all necessary documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I believe we have, Lisa, Human Resources.
Yes, so this is in conjunction with the presentation on medical self-insurance that we did on the September 14th trustee meeting. So these, actually, these next, this resolution and the next two are basically enacting us to enter into agreement with, number one, this one is our consulting firm that helps us get the bids and gets everything underway, and then entering into agreement also with our third-party administrator, which is Medben, and they administer the claims, and then entering into a contract and agreement with our stop-loss carrier, which is Pan American.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-215, resolution authorizing and entering into a benefit management agreement with Medical Benefits Administrators, Inc., Medben, as third-party administrators in connection with the provision of certain self-insured group health insurance benefits for eligible township employees and officers, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and deliver all necessary documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
No, just exactly what Lisa had said. This is, this is actually the third-party administrator.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-216, resolution authorizing and entering into a contract with Pan American Life Insurance Company in connection with the provision of group health insurance benefits through an individual self-insurance program for the provision, individual, and aggregate stop-loss protection, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and deliver the necessary documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-217, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 837 Allenwood Court to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-218, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 186 Francis Ridge Drive to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-219, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 5472 Rapid Run, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. DeLong, zoning?
Yes. This is a property at 5472 Rapid Run Road. It is a vacant property. We did receive a complaint about excessive vegetation. We issued an informal letter with no compliance. We did stop at the property this morning, it is still in the same condition, so we do request that you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-220, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 222 Greenwell Avenue, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. DeLong?
This is another vacant property at 222 Greenwell. We did receive a complaint about it. We issued informal notice with no compliance. We inspected the property again this morning, it is in still the same condition, and we request that you place the property under nuisance abatement so we can use our procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 222, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 3950 Delhi Pike and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. DeLong?
We received a complaint at this, for this address at 3950 Delhi Pike. We did issue informal orders with no compliance. The property was inspected today, and it still remains in the same condition. Staff requested the board declare the subject property a nuisance so we can address the violations with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 221 was pulled. Resolution 2016 223, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 5448 Delhi Pike and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. DeLong?
Yes, this is actually an occupied property at 5448 Delhi Pike. We did receive a complaint about excessive vegetation. We did issue informal notice or orders with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning. It remains in the same condition, so we do request that you declare the property a nuisance so we can use our nuisance abatement procedures to remedy the situation.
Is there any danger of that wall falling?
Probably not.
Okay.
But we can, we'll double-check that, though.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 224, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 4712 Fair Road and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. DeLong?
Yeah, this is a vacant property of 4712 Fair Road. As you can see, there is excessive vegetation. It actually unfortunately looks a lot worse today with the rain and the sun we've recently had. We did issue informal orders with no compliance. The property was inspected, as I mentioned, this morning. It is still in the same condition. We do request that you declare it a nuisance so we can address the situation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 225 is pulled. Resolution 2016 226, resolution amending and restating violation enforcement procedures adopted at resolution number 2015 208 regarding dangerous structures, nuisance conditions, and junk motor vehicles and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution, Mr. DeLong? And I believe Dave, Dave Lane's not going to join this discussion? Okay.
Must need be, I guess.
All right.
Really, this is just to address changes that happen to the Ohio Revise Code. They changed the notification from 30 days to 20 days, and this is only for dangerous structures. It does not affect the highways and grass or the junk debris and things like that. So this is just really to address the dangerous structures issue. So it is to expedite the process so we can get things addressed more quickly. And that's really all this is about. It's just to change our policies to match the Ohio Revise Code.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016 227, resolution modifying appointments to the Financial Advisory Board during 2016 and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
I guess during this year, we've had a couple changes in the Financial Advisory Board kind of mid-year, which we are having to bring up. We have two resignations that we had. We have a seven, normally a seven-member board. We like to maintain the seven members